I will call to order the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty. Meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. Uh, start with introductions of planning commissioners. Scott Nelson, District Three. Dawn?
Dawn DeHande, District One.
Doug?
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Eric?
Eric Casino, District Two.
Ed?
Ed Fleischer, District Two.
Jim?
Uh, Jim Simmons, District Three.
Donna?
You're muted, Donna.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, Donna.
Yeah, Donna Nickerson, District Three.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
And second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes on November fourth, two thousand twenty and accept the audio as the official record?
So move.
Okay. Any additions or corrections? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes from November fourth, two thousand twenty and accepting the audio as the official record, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Right, motion carries. We'll move on to public communications. So anybody that wishes to speak to us about a topic for which we have not had a public hearing, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Okay, we've got a call in from somewhere, a three six oh number.
Good evening, Commissioners, this is Christie White from the Delphi Valley. Um, just, I guess I need to clarify and perhaps you can confirm this. Um, I wanted to comment on the setbacks for resorts.
We, Christie, we've already had a public hearing on that, we can't take more comment.
Then why is there a letter dated today, November eighteenth, as documents submitted for you guys this evening?
Um, I haven't seen it yet, so I don't know.
Okay, it's out there on your, on your website, so point of clarification there. That needs to be addressed.
Okay, uh, John Woodford?
Commissioners, uh, I just wanted to raise what I think is a very important issue. And that is, what is the plan moving forward? Uh, a November fourth meeting, I talked primarily about the redesignation of a lot of parcels. And it looks as like, it looks like there is no plan on that issue beyond sending postcards to people. Uh, during the work session, you, the SMP work session, uh, you pretty much followed through Commissioner Carmen's comments. Uh, but there was no resolution of any of the items that you talked about. Uh, tonight, we're talking about more chapters. And while you're reviewing another addition, if you will, of the pink edition of this document. Uh, and there are commissioner comments being made. There's been no mention of making a motion to say, we want to recommend. X, Y, Z to the staff with a second and a vote. Uh, and it sounds like, just like we've done in the past many times over, that your, the comments are just going to be made to staff and where does it go? Uh, will staff consider these comments that are being made? Uh, will anything happen between now and the public hearing? Or is the document that you have before you, the document that's going to be presented at a public hearing? Uh, I, it's mind boggling to me that there is no outlined plan of where this is all going. Uh, and I can relate back to other, uh, discussions of subjects I've talked about where staff presented a list of alternatives on different issues. And you voted on option one, two, three, uh, that's not happening here. And I cannot figure out what is happening, uh, and where the direction is. There's no plan, or at least staff has never stated that there's a plan, and I would like to hear it. I, again, this week I submitted a letter with comments. Uh, I'm not sure that staff is even listening to comments from the public. So I hope that if you, any of you pick up on anything that was in my comments, you'll ask the question at least. But the big question you have to ask, does plan have a sta, does staff have a plan? Thank you.
Uh, Robert?
Yes, Commissioners, I'm following up on John Woodford's comments. I have made comments, uh, previously about the master program amendments, uh, regarding toxic algae blooms in the lakes here in Thurston County. And I submitted to Andrew, uh, the staff, Andrew Dufobis. Uh, the other day, a written version of an amendment I proposed to one of the. Uh, uh, sections of the master program, which is nineteen six hundred one seventy, dealing with residential development. And in that, I have proposed a amendment to the development standard two, which requires that all sewage disposal and water systems shall be in compliance with state and local health regulations. Including but not limited to Thurston County Board of Health, Article Three and Four, for onsite sewage and water supply requirements. My amendment, uh, deals with onsite sewage, which has been the primary cause of, of toxic algae blooms over the last few years. So I've dealt with that, I've submitted it to Andrew, he said he would sit to, uh, submit it, I'm sorry, to your commission. It has, uh, various subsections dealing with phosphorus, which is the basic cause of the problems of the algae blooms. And I think, uh, regulation of, of the septic tank sewage systems around the shoreline lakes, uh, will cause a reversal of these toxic algae blooms. So I'm hoping, hopeful that that will be considered in your process as you go through when we have a public hearing on, uh, the shoreline master program. So that's my comment.
Okay, could you, uh, state your full name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Robert Jensen. Four zero three one, twenty first Avenue Southeast, apartment two zero one, Lacy nine eight five zero three.
Great, thank you, Barry Halverson.
Uh, thanks, Scott, I've got a couple of comments. Uh, I, I would really appreciate Jennifer, uh, before we conclude tonight, telling us, similar to what John Woodford was talking about, what the process is for all the comments that we've submitted. All the recommendations we've made that we haven't seen, uh, put into this SMP over the last three and a half years. Uh, are we just wasting our time, uh, submitting all these comments? The other thing, I just, on chapter four hundred, nineteen four hundred one twenty, there was a, a new section put in, a pink section called Standards for Hazard Tree Removal. It says where a threat to human life or property is demonstrated, the department may allow removal or trimming of hazard trees within shoreline jurisdiction. Requests for tree removal shall be reviewed by the department in accordance with the following criteria. And it lists criteria to include getting permits, et cetera. Uh, when you got a hazard tree that needs to be removed, or a downed tree on your property, you need to remove it, whether it's in the buffer zone or not. Uh, so I don't understand this, it was a new section that was put in, I can say it again, it's a pink highlight, it was something that was new, I'm sure it was added. Uh, after paragraph three, standards for view trimming. But that really needs to be clarified, that, depending on how large your buffer is, depending on if you're shoreline residential or rural conservancy, it can make a hell of a difference. The other thing, I just want to address Robert's comment that he just made before mine about phosphorus and toxic algae blooms and the cause being septic systems. I don't know what lake he's on, uh, what lake he's talking about, uh, I'm from Lake Lawrence. We've had no less than three studies since nineteen ninety-five about toxic algae blooms specifically, one by the University of Washington, one by a private company, out of Seattle Environmental Company. They've all found that septic systems had nothing to do with the toxic algae blooms in our lake, not anything to do with it. Um, it's a common occurrence in the lake because of the material that's deposited on the bottom of the lake. Uh, I wish people would stop talking about septic systems as the cause for the problem when they're not. And so I, I really would like Jennifer to talk about the process on how our comments are reviewed, how they're accepted by the planning commission. And what the planning commission intends to do with our comments before a public hearing. Thanks, Scott.
Uh, call in from a two oh six number?
Hello?
Yep.
Yes, uh, this is Mark Hancock with Stigali Properties, um, a couple of quick points tonight, um, you can hear me okay?
No.
I can hear you not okay.
Okay, uh, give me a second, I'll, I'll, I'll move the location and see if that'll help. Um. I, two, two, hang on one sec, sorry, Lisa, can you turn that off? Um, can you hear me better now?
Well, not really, but I can understand you.
Well, then Scott, could you tell us what we're, what he's saying? That would be great.
Uh. Yeah, this is not a good connection, is it?
Can you be fine on the recording, though?
Okay, I'll, I'll try this, I have two points tonight, Mark Hancock with Stigali Properties. One is that, uh, there's been a request for some time for you to receive a list of how these new codes are different from state codes. And I'd like to tell you that you crossed over one of those in your last meeting, uh, in your, in your section, um. In your section for natural, which is nineteen. Oh, okay, in your section for natural, you, you allow a residential use natural only if it's outside of the two hundred feet. Otherwise, it's a conditional use to go inside, uh, that is contrary to the state. The state WAC one seven three, two six, two eleven, specifically says, single family residential development may be allowed as a conditional use within environment. So this is one place where you've already crossed over and you have a more strict code than the state, so you still need that list where your things are different from the state. Uh, my second point would be to support John about the process, when the two, when the twenty seven hundred people find out that they've been, they don't only have a different buffer when they go to natural, but they'll have other restrictions like the width of their parcel and constraints and what they can and can't do. Uh, you're liable, especially when, when you consider the timing of that versus the hearing versus the, uh, adoption of the code of, of the ordinance. Uh, they're going to be in a hurry to get that undone, which will create a lot of anger, and you could end up with a thousand people that you're hearing, uh, all very unhappy. And it could take you two or three days to clear them all, to clear through all their comments. So, uh, I, I, I agree with John, you need to understand the process better. Was that fairly clear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, oh, one more, in the, in the thing tonight, you're going to see a hundred and forty minimum widths for a lot width for, uh, natural, which is in section nineteen four hundred one forty. So that hundred and forty width of natural, uh, those people would have had a lesser width than their prior designation, and I don't know how the hundred and forty natural now compares to the natural before, but you're about to cross over another one, I think, another trip hazard where, uh, it's, you know, the situation is not what it was before. And it's worse, thank you.
Scott, you're muted if you were trying to speak.
Okay, okay, let's move on to special use code amendment for resorts and retreats.
Evening Commissioners, my name is Andrew Baum with Community Planning. I just kind of want to address the comment that we received this evening about, uh, public comment. Uh, the applicant had written a letter as a follow-up to the options being considered by the planning commission this evening, which was forwarded to you guys, um, just this afternoon. Uh, just to be clear, the, um, well, it's not the planning commission's protocol to not accept public comment at the public hearing. The PC is not, uh, the planning commission is not legally barred from receiving input on the legislative amendments after a public hearing. But definitely has not been the practice. Um, since this was a citizen application for a code change, staff thought it would be prudent to forward it to the planning commission for their deliberations. And I would like to apologize, uh, for any confusion, uh, that this may have caused. So, kind of clearing that up, I will jump directly into my presentation for this evening. Let me go ahead and share my screen. So this evening, we are discussing Development Code Docket, CR one, Resorts and Retreats Code Amendment. This is a follow-up work session from the public hearing on November fourth, where the majority of the planning commissioners directed staff to do some research on setback standards found in Title Twenty for commercial and industrial uses within the county. Staff created a comparison chart to show the different setbacks. There were three sections within the chart that kind of highlighted different aspects of the kind of setbacks we see within the code. Uh, the first section we're going to start with is just the zoning districts that you would see, and this is just a snippet of the overall zoning districts, uh, that are commercial or industrial. But as you can see, the standards that you generally see off of a budding right of ways, uh, or not, kind of varies significantly. So the first, first one, for example, is rural, commercial, center district. From the front yard setback, it's a ten foot setback. But when you're bu, abutting an arterial, it jumps to twenty. And as you can kind of see, once you go through the chart, it kind of just jumps based on the, the intensity of the road, anywhere from ten to twenty-five to twenty to thirty-five. And many of these, uh, zoning districts have a varying uses that you can kind of see, some have retail locations, some have churches, some have hotels. And so it just really kind of depends on where you are within the county and what zoning district you're talking about. And kind of looking at the top of the chart, you see R, 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 one to five. And so as you can see, it, it actually defers it to a different, uh, chapter within Title Twenty, because it doesn't specifically address setbacks in that specific chapter. It actually jumps into this area where it highlights based on the general use and the road classification. And so for commercial, industrial, or non-residential, you would see from a collector, local road or private road, a ten foot setback. And from an arterial, state highway, or railroad right of way, it would be twenty-five. And so when speaking about resorts and retreats, um, if we didn't discuss. A setback off of the public right of way, it would then revert it to the R, 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 one to five zoning district, which then would revert it to this chapter, um, in Title Twenty. And that chapter is twenty point oh seven, oh seven, zero three zero. And then the last section of the comparison chart is actually special uses that have their own defined setback. And so they kind of vary, obviously, as you can see, for example, the asphalt production has a five hundred and a three hundred foot setback. The five hundred foot setback is from public parks and public preserves, and the three hundred foot setback is from residential zoning districts, uh, that are zone one to five, UGA's residential lots, less than one acre. Kind of going down a little bit further, you have composting facilities, which is one hundred feet, and that is actually on all property lung lines. While on country end, it is only on a budding residential districts. And so it kind of goes into the details when you go into that specific use. And then kind of going down just a little bit further, uh, prison facilities is based on the number of inmates, and the, the winner is the juvenile detention facility, and that is seven hundred and fifty feet on all sides of the property. So there's the largest setback that we have in Title Twenty. And so with all of that information, we kind of jump into our options. And so staff has compiled five options for you guys to consider, for the planning commission to consider this evening. Um, option one is to just amend the existing, uh, the, the proposed regulations from one hundred feet to five hundred feet. Option two is to maintain kind of what we just discussed, an option one with the five hundred foot setback, but allow for the applicants to apply for a reduction based on screening and landscaping techniques, uh, allowed within Title Twenty. Option three is completely new, and so we kind of wanted to address different aspects. Um, the first aspect is all structures and parking areas shall be setback from adjacent residential properties, a minimum of one hundred feet. And what that means in this context is. Any existing building or parking lot has a minimum setback of one hundred feet. And that would perfectly align with the existing regulations for, um, resorts and retreats. Another aspect that would be new is all new structures and parking areas shall be setback from adjacent residential properties, a minimum of five hundred feet. And then allow for the reduction option if the applicants wish to do so, and that reduction would be fifty percent to no less than two hundred and fifty feet. If they utilize a screening or landscaping technique in Title Twenty. Option four is also completely new, it more or less states all new structures and parking areas shall be setback from residential properties, a minimum of five hundred feet, with the option of reducing that setback to two hundred and fifty feet. But we also want to highlight specifically within option four, all new structures and parking areas that are setback from adjacent public right of ways, a minimum of one hundred feet. And so we are completely separating this from the other aspects, so that just for public right of ways, it's one hundred feet. And then finally, option five is to maintain it as it is proposed today, and that would just be a minimum of one hundred feet from adjacent residential properties. And that more or less will. Kind of conclude my presentation, and when, uh, the planning commission feels that they have landed on an option, we, I have one more slide that can more or less address, uh, the recommended motion. And we also had a question from one of the commissioners regarding, uh, setbacks from public right of ways. And within that attachment that was added to the network from the applicants, it included a map showing the five hundred foot setback. Um, with relation to the, the shape of the parcel. And so on the second map, you'll see that on the, actually, let me pull it up so that it's easier to articulate.
So, you're, this is from the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to suggest, I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels about this, but. We have a general policy of not accepting comment after the public hearing is closed. And they had plenty of opportunity to submit this beforehand, I don't think we should look at it. Anybody else?
Yeah, I agree, this is Donna Nickerson.
Okay, so more or less that would conclude my presentation, then.
So Andrew, I'm kind of curious, ask two. I mean, everything else seems to be, the majority is around the hundred foot buffer. Why, why is this one even considered the need for a five hundred foot buffer?
So the five hundred feet actually came from a public comment that was received two meetings ago, um, from a citizen that highlighted that it would be a substantially larger facility. And a larger setback may be needed to mitigate, uh, the impacts on the surrounding areas. And so with that, we kind of just utilized the number that they provided. And at the direction of the planning commission and have subsequently incorporated that into that, uh, into the different options so that you guys can consider it. And obviously, if the five hundred feet does seem too large for you guys this evening, we can always adjust it accordingly. But we just kind of went with the five hundred from the public comment in the direction we received.
When we see prisons are at three hundred and twenty-five feet, it seems really hard to justify the five hundred foot setback for a resort. I did a little math exercise, and if this parcel is square and it's a hundred acres, that five hundred foot setback will occupy seventy-three of those one hundred acres. That seems somewhat excessive.
Yes.
With eight hundred acres and it's square, it's still a considerable amount of area, it's another two hundred and forty-eight acres out of the eight hundred.
Yeah.
Personally, I'm in favor of option five, I think we ought to just leave it alone.
I'm okay with that.
Does option five, what does option five address the, the right of, the, the highways, the roads and the right of ways?
And so, option five. Would more or less maintain it so that it would be one hundred feet from, uh, adjacent residential properties, and then it would ultimately revert it back to that code section where, um, for non-residential, it would. Be on the right of way, ten feet, because it is considered a local road, and then on the southern tip, adjacent to the lake, there is a state piece of property. And that would be considered of side or rear from development services perspective, and that would be a five foot setback.
I do want to make the point, though, to everyone that this is a, a code amendment that would apply countywide for resorts and retreats, applying for special use permit, although we're using this site as our example, and it is the citizens' site who suggested the amendment. This would apply throughout the county to resorts and retreats who apply them to this code section.
Of a hundred acres or more?
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
I move, I mean, I, I would make a motion to go with five, you want to throw those up there?
Hey, would you put, would you put option five up, please, Andrew?
Yeah.
What is that?
There's some background noise somewhere.
So, do you guys see option five on your screens?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and you're saying that there is something that would address the right of way setback?
More or less, the, uh, when it's not truly defined with the special use, it reverts back to the zoning district, which would then revert it to, uh, the base setbacks for non-residential, um, properties. And so it would be ten feet, twenty, ten feet on a local road, twenty feet on an. And so it would be 10 feet, 20, 10 feet on a local road, 20 feet on an arterial, five feet on the side and five feet on the rear.
I think I'm in favor of option five as well.
So did he make a, a motion then? If he did, I will second that.
I love that we move ahead with option five, which is no change.
I'll second that.
Hey, any further discussion?
Well, I still think it could be 500 setback. Just to keep, make sure that it is rural, remains rural.
Anybody else?
See, Ed, I, I would favor this option. I, I think, I mean, I like those numbers dampened together. I mean, 500 feet eats up like a whole bunch of the property. When it's eaten up more than half the property, that seems like a large setback for this resort activity. So I support the motion.
Yeah, but that's what people like when they go to a resort and they want a lot of privacy and, and just a lot of a beautiful landscape, and that comes with that 500 foot. You can do it much nicer.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Okay, all those in favor of recommending option five, which would maintain the current setback, please signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, one, I'm imposing for that, from that.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, and so kind of going along that, I did, I do have a recommended motion. That was the final piece of the remaining items for a resource and retreats. And so the code as it was currently written would be the one that would be addressed with this recommended motion that I put on your screen.
I, I would move to recommend approval on development code docket item CR1, Resorts and Retreats Facilities, which amends the Thurston County Code, Chapter 2054.54, to create two subsections and incorporate new standards on resorts and retreat facilities over 100 acres. And don't I have to have? Isn't there more to it than that, Andrew?
It's, it's kind of encompassing that, that really the big section of it is incorporate new standards for resorts and retreats over 100 acres.
And the new standard is at 100 feet?
It would be exactly how it was written in the ordinance that was brought before you at the public hearing. It, including the, the size requirements, the setbacks and the, the maximum, I think footprint, I believe is.
And you went with option five, which is the 100 feet. So that's what's going to move forward in the recommendation.
Then I'll second.
But is, okay, but is that new? What we're doing, option five?
Option five would be aligning with the proposed ordinance that I brought before you guys at the work session and at the public hearing, more or less. It's, it's the proposed ordinance to create a new subsection for resorts and retreats on parcels over 100 acres and essentially duplicate the standards, but increase them. That was already shown in the, the code section.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of recommending approval of development code docket item CR1? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I am opposed, yeah.
So one opposed, anything else, Andrew?
No, that will be it.
Okay, we're got, move on to Shoreline Master Program with Andy Defobus.
I'm sorry, Scott, for interrupting, but somebody has a TV or something going on in the background. Could that be kind of muted or turned off or something? It's sort of, it's kind of me anyway.
Maybe if everybody mutes, who doesn't?
Yeah, I don't know.
Donna or unmuted right now.
So yeah, I don't know, but I mean, I think the best way is for all of us to just mute ourselves and hopefully you can reach the space bar and press it to, or for all of us to mute ourselves and then unmute yourself when you wish to speak.
I'll have. Donna, can you mute yourself? Do you know?
Yeah, it's way over in the opposite side of the house, but I will do that. He said it was a, yeah.
Oh, okay, it worked.
Okay.
Hey, Andy, before we launch, why don't I just answer off the top a couple of the comments we heard tonight? And then you can chime in.
Sounds great.
Where I may go astray. I just want to address Mr. Woodford, Mr. Halverson's comments. So you know, I know we've been at this a long time with lots of meetings. Not everyone's at every meeting. Not everyone remembers everything said. So I'm happy to repeat what I've said previously and staff has said previously about the plan moving forward for the SMP update and the public outreach plan. And again, we've briefed the Board of County Commissioners as well on our public outreach plan. I'm happy to share that info again tonight. And then I'll also address how public comment is considered in this process as we've been doing it for many months now. So first of all, the plan moving forward. And we are waiting to land on a draft SMP update that is ripe for formal, broad public distribution and formal public comment. And at that time, we will open up and engage in our public outreach campaign, which is multifaceted. And it involves a virtual online open house with interactive maps so folks can see how property designations may or may not be changing or are proposed. There will be multiple fact sheets linking to many of the options and topics of interest that we've heard from the public all along about things like expanding existing uses, how we're going to achieve no net loss, shoreline environment designations, and on and on. And there will be a postcard mailing, as you know, directly out to folks who shoreline environment designations due to the updated science and inventory information are, and the changes in state law are proposed to change. To invite them to learn more and to view how those changes may affect them. There will be a press release put out, web mailer put out, and just multiple of our ways of getting the word out to folks across the whole community who haven't been at these meetings and haven't been tracking, like everyone who does come to these meetings is, is so engaged, but most people are not. We can't do any of that until we have a draft that's ready to go. And that draft is a draft and it will have multiple options. And many of those options do reflect directly the public comment that has been received. That public comment is into, it's comes into staff. We post it on the web. We share it with the planning commission. We have invited the planning commission to take that public comment and respond to it in terms of creating options that will then go into the draft to deliberate the things that they hear. That is the process. Once we get to a public hearing stage, we will have the ability to have a formal public comment on the actual public hearing draft. And all of that will be also taken in, shared with planning commission and deliberated with this body. And then we will land on probably new options or different things that the planning commission wants to pursue based on that public comment. So we are still at the pre-public outreach stage. We do have a plan. We've always had a plan. It will be moving forward and implemented. But we have to get there, and that's what tonight is going to move us a little bit closer to getting there.
And Jennifer, if I could just to add to that, to take it down one level to a more granular comment in terms of what is actually happening in these meetings when the planning commission is talking and staff is listening and nodding based on their, what they're saying. So I am taking notes. You know, both doing that in a notepad and also in the actual Word document that's on the screen. I'm going to continue to do that if that's an efficient process for everybody. So, so the note taking and, you know, the direction that I'm taking from the planning commission is happening in real time. And that's how I'm memorializing that is by putting it in, in that document. After the last meeting, Jennifer sent me what her take was on everything planning commission asked for, and I included that as well. So that's how that stuff is getting recorded moving forward. And I, I can take the, the comment to try to be as decisive as possible in stating what the next action is based on what I hear from you guys. So if the planning commission says, yeah, we want change it to this word, then I will try to say, okay, I'm changing it to this. It's going to be reflected the next time the planning commission sees it and then we'll, we'll move on. But it is all happening as these meetings progress and everything's being written down.
Having said that, to manage expectations, obviously, we get public comments in from all sorts of different angles, right? And so it is the job of the planning commission. It's a very hard and appreciated job to take that in and to chew on it and to come up with the direction that they would like staff to go with the draft. There's a lot of different opinions out there. That's not going to change. Once we issue a public hearing draft, it's going to even be amplified. And so we're going to have to get ready for taking in even more multiple diverse viewpoints and opinions and running those through the filter of the planning commission and your deliberative, deliberative process. And then subsequently adjusting the draft as we go. So that's the process. I hope that was clear.
Okay, great. So tonight, the planning commission will continue its review of the updated Shoreline Master Program document that was dated October 21st and distributed, introduced on, and introduced on that date. So we are looking for specific feedback from the planning commission to incorporate into that public hearing draft, be it from your review or from anything you've heard from the public. We're looking for specific text amendments or options that the planning commission would like staff to put in that draft for the public to consider or to draw attention to, to specific areas in that document. So at the November 4th meeting, we got through chapters 19, 100 and 200 of the planning commission's review. And tonight, we are going to review chapters 300 through 500, or at least get as far as we can with that. And so since the last time, as I mentioned, you know, I've been keeping a tally in the draft of items that, that you have asked for. A lot of what we saw last time was definitions, how do they work? Where are they used? Are there alternate definitions that should be proposed? Or is it clear, you know, so, so those comments were recorded. And so the next version of the draft that you see, you will see, you know, staff's attempt at, at incorporating your feedback or producing something for you to react to, to include in that public hearing draft. And I also have, I took down, you know, several questions from you all to forward on to ecology on things like shoreline jurisdiction. And, you know, can report back on those when I have answers on that. Before we dive into the document, the planning commission had asked to see a mockup of the postcard. And I went back and worked with Jennifer on the latest draft of that. And so we would like to share a draft of the, of the postcard with you that we would plan to send out to folks who would be most directly impacted by the SMP update. You know, those folks whose shoreline environment designation is changing to something that is more protective or are coming into jurisdiction for the first time based on changes in the data layers. So I'm going to go ahead and throw that up there, have you take a look at it, get your initial thoughts. And then I know Jennifer may have some comments on that as well. So.
I'll wait to put it up there.
Okay, so it's front and back to, so a two-page PDF essentially. I'll go ahead and walk you through it. So this is the front side of it. We don't have a date on it, obviously, because we don't know the exact date where we're going to land. I have put a December date range in here, but you know, we will see how we go and what date we hit. And so on the back, so this is the current message that is, that is included on the postcard. So Thurston County is updating its Shoreline Master Program. You are receiving this postcard because there are new shoreline rules proposed for your property. Join us for a virtual open house to find out what is changing, how you can weigh in, get your questions answered. And then there is a web URL that folks can type in to access that page. So this is the current working draft of the postcard. Thoughts, initial reactions?
I liked it. I mean, I'm glad we're getting to the notification piece. But for me personally, I, I think these people should know now so they can be involved in the process of helping you. So we can hear their comments now and get that going rather than waiting till the open house and then kind of starting over again. If we heard what they had to say now, we'd be, we'd get a little further ahead of the game. This is kind of, it feels like we're just dragging it on a little bit longer than we need to. Why? Why can't we let them know that we're doing this now is, I guess, my question, so.
Well, I think the initial, the thought was that, you know, this information was all going to be provided at the open house. And therefore, you know, we would make the notification ahead of that. So it's kind of two things, you know, it's, it's, there will be a broad public dissemination of the next draft and the open houses Jennifer kind of alluded to with press releases, with things on our website, et cetera. But this was a more specific targeted approach in that broader effort. That, that's the next push that we're looking at program wide for this update is, is the announcement of that, that draft and that virtual open house. And so the thought was that this would be, you know, a component of that. And so in addition to that broad dissemination, we're going to go ahead and send the specific notification to those folks that we identified with as, you know, potentially most affected. So the thought was to do it all together. We'd have, we can certainly entertain the thought or discussion of doing it sooner rather than later. But the operating assumption to date is that we would do this and launch it once we were closer to the open house.
I think we're not ready. We don't have the information finalized on the options. We don't have the, the draft. That's the work of the planning commission right now is trying to create the draft that can be circulated with all of those options. I think that I understand that, you know, you have people who've been following this process closely for so long and are so engaged, and it feels like, well, everyone should be engaged. I don't want to lose control of this process and make, and get confusion out there and have multiple drafts again where people don't know what is the public hearing draft and what they should be commenting on or reacting to. That, that just breeds a lot of confusion in the community. And so the, the plan again is to get us to that public hearing draft, which is still a draft and have a very, a long, I don't, Andy didn't mention this before, but we're thinking at least a six-week-long open house and review period, if not more, between when we send out this postcard and launch everything to when you would even hold a public hearing. And then, as you know, that's still just the beginning because then there'll be multiple, multiple work sessions after that where you're going through the public input.
For the people who are not involved, would this be their only notification of a change?
This is the direct, only direct postcard mailing that we have planned of the change. And again, it's just targeting the folks who would have their shoreline environment designations proposed to be changed or who would be pulled into the program. They may be currently regulated under the critical areas ordinance. Now they would be regulated under the shoreline master programs. The regulations in a lot of those cases may not even substantively change. In some cases, they would. So it's really, it would be hard to. In some cases they would, so it's really, it would be hard to try to say in detail how an individual's property would be affected. So what we want to do is just alert them. New shoreline rules are proposed, come find out what it's all about and have the most accurate information up to date. The maps, the fact sheets, everything there for them to be as educated as possible. And those interactive opportunities with staff to have their questions answered, which will be part of this open house as well.
But what I'm getting at is this would be the only singular notification that would be sent out?
So far, this is the only one that's planned as a direct mail.
So if they miss this, they don't know about it.
Well, we will still be doing all of our normal notifications, our press release. I'm sure we will do one in the Olympian as well as Niskewa Valley News. We will be doing our normal road show, so we will offer up, for example, through our, our public information officers through the county have their Facebook and Twitter and other means to get information out about when we have an event like this. And so we'll be using all of those avenues to widely disseminate it. But as far as a direct mailing, this is the only one planned at this point.
I got two points. One is I'd like to get a copy of this, then I can look at it better and give you my input. I would think that the other commissioners would like the same. The second point is Scott had mentioned months ago when we were talking about the characterization information that we would look at it more carefully and, and at the pieces of property that are being changed. And much like you did with, with zoning. And when I look at that property on Offutt Lake that's now natural, I can't understand why you would do that. Why it would be characterized that way. So I, I'm, I think that before we get to, we, we need to, I need to see more of what's changed and have discussions in this, in this forum to get input from other commissioners.
And so I would, oh, sorry, Ed, did you have something to add there?
Go ahead and answer his question, then I have a question.
Okay, so I can post this, so this visual essentially, you know, used during this work session. I can post this on the planning commission website so that you can see it, everyone can have access to it. And then as far as specific properties where we know that we've had questions about the shoreline designation and whether the appropriate one has been proposed. You're, we're working on information on that for you. So you will see as part of this whole package of information that comes back before you. You know, we've had some questions about some of these designations and staff has done some analysis and we will bring that all back to the planning commission to look for your recommendation on whether to change any of those designations. So the, the shoreline environment designations, the report and all the maps of all those designations that are part of this program is all appendix A of the shoreline master program document, the package that's going to go all the way up through to ecology. So you will see information specifically related to Offutt Lake, now two specific inquiries on Offutt Lake. So that, more to come on that. And there was something else, but it.
Well, it was just a copy of the, of the card as well as, as us getting into a little deeper into the redesignations. And I, I don't want to just see those that people are smart enough to complain about it already. Because they've, they've got hired consultants, but you know, I, I think we owe it to other people who don't have consultants and who aren't in the process of developing a piece of property for us to evaluate those things.
Right. And so we've, we've had a couple, a couple of work sessions over the last year or so specifically related to shoreline environment designations and memo produced on the, you know, the relative makeup of the different shoreline environment designations, what percentages and mile, you know, mile lengths make up each category. And we ultimately created that tool and distributed to the planning commission to let you guys take a look at specific areas that you may want to focus on. So I'm kind of curious what, if we were to, and you know, totally open to going back and providing information that would be beneficial to you guys and your decisions. I would look to you to see more about what that looks like, or specifically what could we bring you in addition to those things that have come forward? That would help that.
Andrew, my question on this is, is, so is this link you have there, is this, does this get them to all the information on the shoreline plan? I mean, it's everything that's on the site now and everything. It, it seems, it, that's one question. And the second question is, you're calling this a virtual open house. I mean, open house usually occurs at a certain date and time. Is, is there? Is this just a website for people to look at or is there an actual open house for Q and A zoom meeting or?
Yeah, I think it goes to just the main page. I, I don't know if I could click it or what would happen.
If it's just sort of going to the information page and stuff, then I might think about renaming it. It's not like join us for an open house. We're not.
Well, but it is. So we're, we're actually re, reformatting a lot of that information to be more like an interactive open house experience. So with an interactive map and the fact sheets. And then Andy, as far as the, can you talk about sort of the Q and A, getting your?
Yeah. So right now we're planning to do sort of a, well, there's going to be a web comment form on there. So at any point, people can, can write to staff and ask questions, seek information, et cetera. And for at least the first couple of days after that launches, we're trying to do a rapid response period essentially where if, if you send in a question, you know, we're on it, we're monitoring that and trying to return information within like a one to two business day period to get people that information. Cause we expect, once we launch that, we'll have an initial, a big glut of interest and really want to be on that when people are engaged. So that's the plan there. Also, as Jennifer mentioned, this would stay up for quite a long period of time. It would stay up for up to six weeks for people to go on and engage with it whenever they wish. That comment form will stay there and people can still submit comments much like they can today by going to the, the website. They submit a comment that comes into our email box. So they'll always have that ability. It's just there will be a targeted date range where we're, you know, very closely monitoring that and trying to do a rapid response. And the other thing that we've talked about, Jennifer and I is recording a little video or a how to explainer that kind of clicks through the open house and explains all the different pieces of it. And then how people can get involved and get engaged. So that, that's currently the, the thinking there.
Good, thanks.
Andrew, I wanted to, to kind of revisit some of this language here again, because this is sounding a little too benign and, and not nearly as alarming as I'd like it to. Because these 2,700 identified properties are the ones that are going to have the most consequential changes. They're either going to be in there in the SMP for the first time, or they're going to go to a much more protective SED. This isn't just the people that are going to be staying in the same SED and there might be a minor change in buffers, aren't going to get this notice. And it's not near as consequential, but these 2,700 people are really going to have the biggest shock. And so I, I'd really like to see the wording in here, let these people know that, that that this is going to be consequential for them and that is going to be much more protective of the environment, which means it's going to have a much bigger effect on their development opportunities.
So Eric, I appreciate that input. I want to avoid language that's value laden, because everyone's circumstances are different. And how these changes may or may not affect a property will depend a lot on how the property is currently affected by existing regulations. As well as don't, let's not forget that the draft has multiple options. It has smaller buffers, bigger buffers. It has options to allow a dock here or not allow a dock here. It has options about what we call existing uses and expansions. And I, I don't want to, we need to stay neutral enough, but exciting enough that we draw people in and let them know that things are proposed that will affect them. But it, I, I don't feel comfortable and I would not feel comfortable using words like protective or restrictive or any of those words, because I feel like that's not fact based necessarily. We need to make sure we're getting people's.
Is there anybody, or is there even a single one of these 2,700 identified properties that wouldn't be more protective and less development opportunities? It was my impression that these 2,700 are, are going to be the biggest changes, the parcels with the biggest changes to put to them.
I, I think, I don't know that I can say that. I will have to go back and look at several examples, and maybe this will be helpful for you of those properties that would be getting this postcard and sort of walk through a couple of the examples of the changes and how they affect it. And maybe that will help us figure out the right phrasing for this.
I, I can't imagine that any one of these 2,700 parcels are going to become less protective and gain more development rights.
And I think it depends, I think it will ultimately depend on where the draft lands. Like Jennifer said, you could end up in a situation where the, the planning commission recommends buffers on the smaller end and, and maybe in some cases smaller than, than currently exist. And if that goes all the way through, then you know, perhaps that is someone getting more benefit, you know, development benefit. But on the flip side of that, you know, the development standards, they all have to be met as well. It's not just the buffers, the development standards of exactly what you're trying to build. So it's, it could be a mixed bag, but you know, we can keep working on it and working on the verbiage and language. And like Jennifer said, we're trying to strike a balance here, informing without being, you know, alarming.
If it really is a mixed bag, I, I get it. But if, if every one of these 2,700 properties is going to become more protective and less development opportunities, I think that we should be upfront and honest about it right in the postcards. So that way these people know, I don't want anybody being blindsided by anything if we have the opportunity to, to get their input and they're being fully informed.
I, I totally share that value, Eric, about not wanting to blindside people, which is why we're doing a direct mailing in the first place. And I think that, I think that's a good input for us to take back, to do a little more analysis of what's changing. If it's true that all 2,700 are going into some more protective category, maybe we can be more specific about that. So I appreciate that input and I, we're going to, we'll follow up on that and bring it back to you the next meeting or the.
Agree, Eric. I, I don't think it's alarmish in order to let people know exactly what is potentially applicable with their property.
I think one thing we could do on this mailing, since it is targeted, is the one thing we know is that they're designate, this mailing is going to people whose designation is changing. So I think that should probably be on the card.
Yeah, and we played around with that, Scott, and I think that we can revisit that as well. That's good input. It's, it's hard when people don't understand what a designation is in the first place to come out and say, hey, your designation is changing. But maybe that's a good thing, because maybe that'll be like raise their eyebrows and say, well, what does this mean? And get them to click on the link, because our, our goal is to get them to go find out and to be educated about the proposed changes and why, and how if they disagree, they can provide comment and information. That is the entire purpose of this. So I want to make sure it's fact based and real and captures that intent. So I think that's a good, I think we can work with that, Scott, for sure.
Okay, take, write that down. And whether we land on, yeah, you calling a designation or finding some very pithy, short way to explain it, we can work on that. Cause that's what it originally said. And then like Jennifer said, we kind of workshopped, walked away from it, maybe we'll end up back there.
There's been a lot of cooks in this kitchen. You're not the only ones coming to the table. Andy and I don't own this language and at this point no one does. So it's helpful to have this conversation to help us get it to what the planning commission, you know, wants to say. But also make sure that it is factual and gets the right information to the, the folks who need it, gets them engaged.
Okay. Great. All right.
Andy, I think, cause it has that weird link on it that's not real yet. If you just want to just email that postcard, since it's such a draft, out to the planning commissioners instead of posting it.
Yeah.
I don't want folks confused that we're doing a notification and they haven't seen it in their mailbox yet.
The link does actually get you to the planning commission website.
That's good.
Okay, good. I, I, yeah, I think, okay, well, that's good. It goes there and not anywhere else. Okay. Yeah, I can do that. That's fine.
Just email it to us.
Yeah.
That's fine. Can do. Okay. Let's see. So one last item I just wanted to acknowledge before we jump in. You've received some public comments since the last meeting. So Commissioner Carmen, he had sent comments on chapter 300 before the last meeting. And then after that meeting and before this meeting, sent additional comments on four chapters, four and 500, which were sent to the planning commission. You also got comments from John Woodford representing that there's some county shoreline stakeholders coalition. And then this afternoon, I forwarded some comments from Bob Jensen and from Deani Taylor of Taylor Shellfish. So you have all those, those are in the record as well on my end. And as we push and update the website with, you know, batches of comments, those newest comments will get up there. So I just wanted to, you know, walk those across for anyone listening that we got them and they are now in your hands. Okay, with that being said, I think we're ready to dive into the draft document. And so by my watch, we're on chapter 19, 300, which is the general goals and policies of the plan. And so I'll go ahead, seemed to work pretty well last time. I'll go ahead and put that, the document up, the working draft and let the planning commission ask their questions, comments. And I will do my best to memorialize all direction from the planning commission, either verbally or, you know, in this document. So anyone watching is aware of what we're doing. Okay, so let me share again. Okay. So we should be seeing chapter 19, 300. I'll go ahead and make it a little bit bigger. Big as I can. So who would like to start? Who's got a comment question on, within chapter 19, 300?
My first one is on policy SH five and six.
Okay. And I know you've got, yeah, okay. And you, is that in the comments that you sent previously?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm going to open that on my end.
Yeah, I forgot that we did 300. I thought we'd already done 300.
No worries. Let me just make sure I've got that open. You said policy, okay, so five and six, I'll get us there and then let you walk us through your comment.
My main concern is, is with public access, you know, we talk about not paving the trails. And so that can significantly limit access, the ADA access, people that are in wheelchairs and whatnot. And having a brother in law who's in a wheelchair or has been for 50 years. You know, it's important to him to be able to do those things. And I know there's a lot of other people who do too. I'd certainly like to, to at least have the ability to pave some of these trails and not say you can't. Kind of ability to do that.
Yeah. And so I, I guess a global comment I would have just to start off is to, for everyone to remember that chapter 300 here is, is general goals and policies. And so just because it doesn't say anything here about, oh, okay, I say, hang on a sec. Oh, give, okay, give prior, or prioritize developing unpaid previous trail. Okay, we're appropriate. Okay.
Yeah, it says unpaved previous paths.
Great. So, and then so there, you know, we'll have additional options or different, additional opportunities in chapters 400 and 600, talk about specific development standards. I'm not sure, well, I mean, any other red and blue was done before my, my time on the project. So I don't recall the specific reason for adding this in here. But, I mean.
Ecology had said, you know, they want to unpave. That's why it's stuck this way. And it might even say that in the handbook. I forget what, I've probably read it. Mean if we provide reasonable justification for doing it, that they won't allow it. I don't know what rest of the. I don't know what rest of the commissioners feel, but I think it's important that people have, if we're gonna give public access, we gotta, ought to give access to everybody.
I, I agree with that, and also, um, you know, this. By nature of having the, the clause where appropriate on the end of that, you know, it. It lends credence to the thought that there might be situations where it's not appropriate to have it be unpaved or pervious, and perhaps pavement is. Um, going to be the preferred option, and I wonder also if there's a split between. You know, having paved portions of trails in a, uh, in a public park, a public setting versus every single shoreline landowner. Uh, you know, who has a small trail down to their waterfront, having a paved strip. Down to the waterfront versus, you know, portions of pavement being in a, uh, in a park setting. I think about going to Mount Rainier where there are. Uh, you know, different trailheads around, uh, there are portions of trails that are paved. Uh, to promote the broadest access possible, and then you get off the paved trail and it, it becomes more, more rugged. So that might be something, I, I think, uh, yeah, certainly propose language, uh, if you'd like to, or. It's something to think about as we move through these other sections of the document and make sure that, that all different users and user groups are accommodated. I don't think we're trying to exclude anybody, but it's also striking that balance between not paving, you know. Every access to every shoreline. Because I think.
Policy.
I'm sorry.
When I see something that says policy.
Hmm.
That means that's what we want to happen. That's what should happen, so.
Right.
It's important here.
Right.
But this. Oh, Ed, go ahead. Just on publicly owned shorelines, right? It's access to publicly owned shorelines.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so Doug, is there specific language you would propose here that the planning commission could consider?
And I don't know what else to say, I mean, you, you're the ones with, you're the, you're the. Writer of this stuff, I could come up with something, but if you want me to.
Well, I just, I mean, I, I, I think it's a good point, I think it's a good question to address and to make sure that we are providing opportunities. Where, where appropriate, and I know that in other areas of the document ecology, they've made comments about public access and, and recreation components. And making sure that all the requirements are in place, um. So, you know, I could go back and look at the, the benchmarks and make sure that we're hitting whatever standards. We need to hit, because I don't, again, at the end of the day, we don't want to preclude access.
Andrew, would there be anything in the ADA recommendations that might shine some light on this?
Possibly, I mean, I know that has helped when we've had conversations about other things like, uh. ADA requirements for the width of docks, for example, they stayed a minimum of, of sixty inches, um, and that's been instructive when we have looked at. You know, docks in the shoreline environment.
I'd just take out the word unpaved comma pervious.
Hmm.
Developing paths and trails to shoreline areas, and then if we want to get more specific later. As to where that might apply, or I mean, whether we're. Uh, unpaved and pervious paths might be better suited, then we can do that later in four hundred or someplace.
Hmm. Uh. We, that, I could certainly do that, uh, if the planning commission wants me to do that, another option would be. To have that statement be to give priority, prioritize developing paths and trails to shoreline areas and linear access, period. These accesses, um, could, you know, consider these accesses, having them be paid unpaid or pervious where appropriate. So kind of breaking up that sentence is another option, so that the thought, the complete thought is here, but it, it kind of steps down from. Do the thing, period, and then the second part of that is, you know, where possible, do it this way.
Yeah, I could, I could agree with that, I don't know what the other commissioners say. But it gives, at least it leaves it open to have paving if it's appropriate. And if it's.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Are there any other thoughts on that? Um. I, I think that sounds like a good compromise, um, if there are other.
It opens the pavers as well, so they could put in pavers which are really pervious.
Hmm. Okay, so are there, that's three, I, do I, looking for more nodding heads, and I can go ahead and do that, okay. Okay, well, I will. Okay. Let me. Change that real quick. Okay, great.
I mean, you got the radio on again.
Yeah, I'm not sure who that is. Someone's got their TV on.
Everybody mute unless you're talking.
Okay, uh, great, so I've got that marked, saved, Doug, you had, uh. Okay, so you said five and six, if we do that in five, does that, does that get where you were looking at, or is there additional work in six you were looking at? Um, I could see. I could see, you know, in addition to that, if, if you wanted to carry that thought through, there could be room in here to say something like. Um, plan for and encourage recreational opportunities, uh, for use of the shoreline for, for all citizens or all types of. Accommodations or something like that, again, I mean, this is general, so it doesn't, it doesn't preclude it by not saying it, but if it's something you wanted to. Really draw attention to, um, there could be something amended here as well.
Yeah, I, I don't think, in this, I think if we take care of policy five, SH five. SH six is probably okay unless somebody else thinks of something.
Okay. Okay, uh. So, uh, okay, well, we'll move on from there then, so what's next in chapter three hundred?
My next one is one ten eight one.
Okay. Okay, so vegetation conservation, okay.
Yeah, one of my key things is, we, we keep talking about overhanging vegetation. Now, that's important in rivers and streams. But in our eutrophic lakes and in Thurston County, overhanging vegetation. Puts phosphorus in the lake. Causing algae blooms. And so I would like to see us to not put phosphorus in the lake in any way, shape or form that we can. And so, um. I don't know that, whether we can eliminate that.
Well.
See it eliminated, but I think it's in the handbook, so.
And my, my thought on that as well is, is looking at all the different functions that are prescribed for the different types of water bodies laid out in the WAC. Um, and you know, it talks about, uh. Well, right there, I mean shading, right, it's, you know, if you have natural vegetation overhanging a lake, I mean, that's cooling the water down. Uh, it's also providing, um, organic matter inputs for, you know, food. It's, it's leaf matter, it's, uh, it's insects that are falling into the water for fish, so there's other reasons, there are ecological benefits to. Overhanging vegetation, it is a function of the shoreline, and I think that's why that's in here. Uh, and it does speak to, you know, native plant communities versus, um, you know, something that's perhaps more. More modified, um, so I don't know, I don't, that, that's the, the consideration I would make.
Yeah, it, it's a valid point, number one is. But it's a hundred percent valid point for rivers. It's not, and, and some for marine, but it's not a hundred percent for lakes, that's my only point.
Hmm.
If you look at, if you look at my background. In my picture.
Yeah.
That's Long Lake the summer. And what you're seeing there is crusted algae caused by phosphorus in the lake. The lake was not usable for eight weeks of summer because of that. It's a function of combination of vegetation and. Uh, stormwater going into the lake and a lot of other things. So, if you hear me talk a lot about phosphorus, the process of this, you'll see, you'll understand why. Because I've got. Uh, oh, you know, thirteen hundred members of the Long Lake Management District yelling at me because of that. And other lakes in the district have the same thing, so.
Yeah, I, I just have a quick question, is there a lot of overhang on the lake? It seems like most of.
Uh, there isn't on Long Lake, there's not a lot, we just do have a lot of trees, but, but some lakes do.
Okay.
And all the lakes in, in Thurston County are eutrophic lakes, which means they're dying. And they're dying because of organic material buildup in the lakes. That's what an or, that's what a eutrophic lake is, a dying lake, and it's due to organic buildup in the lake. So.
The one thing I would say Doug is this is a goal, and it's kind of overarching stuff. And so I think it's fine in the goals. If we need to address it in later chapters where the actual regulation is, then I think that's where we should do it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, I think, and I, kind of the same thing with the definitions or, uh, some of the applicability stuff we talked about last week, I mean. The, you know, it might be, it's a good thing to keep in mind, and as we go through, um, you know, specific regulations, things like that. Uh, that might be a better place for some of these comments, so we'll see, I mean, obviously it touches on it here, but there might be. You might be able to get more of the change you're looking for, or more bang for your. Comment, you know, uh, later on in the development standards.
Yeah.
So. Okay. Um. Who's got the next comment in, uh, chapter three hundred?
So I've, I've got one on one fifteen.
Okay. Yep, and then from where in one fifteen?
Yeah, well, just the general goal. Because it's provide regulations and voluntary incentives. And. I think we do a good job of providing regulations, but I don't know where the voluntary incentives are.
Hmm. Yeah, and, uh, do any of the policies talk about that at all?
No, the policies don't talk about vol, incentives either.
Hmm, okay, because I, you know. The first thing that comes to mind for me is anything, any, uh, the, the small grants that may be available from, uh, public health. For working on your septic system, things like that, um. But maybe. Yeah, it kind of seems like you want your policies to enumerate your goals. And they don't really do that, doesn't do that currently.
Yeah.
You know, it's the problem with the policy or the goal though, I mean, I think, I think the goal of voluntary incentives is a good goal. Uh, I, I. Probably agree with Scott, I'm not sure what. Voluntary incentives we have out there yet, but.
Hmm.
Well, the only voluntary incentive that I'm aware of in this document is mitigation banking, which is. You can do things as long as you document it and submit it to the county, uh, prior. That gives you credit for, for mitigation. So you can do it now, I mean, but that's not really an incentive, well, it's kind of an incentive, but really. It's not. But that's the only place I know of.
I don't see anything about anything voluntary in one fifteen, and that's what the goal is referring to.
Hmm.
There's not a sing, there's four policies in one fifteen, and the, there's not a s- single goal in there about voluntary. In incentive, so I agree with Scott.
It's interesting because there is kind of, there is a whole body of significant outreach that the county does. Through its education outreach programs around. Uh, protecting water quality, using native vegetation, designing rain gardens, doing, there's a shoreline stewardship workshop plan. For, I think, it fall of twenty twenty one, so. Um, there are things that the county does, and it's, yeah, it's just.
None of them are listed in.
Yeah.
Those are listed in the policies.
And I think that could be something to note here, uh, create a policy about, uh, you know. Promoting that work, well, you know, con- conducting that work and then promoting that work so the public's aware of it, it can take advantage of those things. Um. So we could, we could add, I mean, this is the place to add these things if you, if we want to run those to ground. Memorialize them.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean. Obviously, the biggest thing is. Getting the information out, because I, I know there are programs, but. How many people know about them?
Right.
Obviously, we can't, because this is done so irregularly, we can't really put it. You know, we can't put certain grant programs into the code. Because they probably aren't going to be there the whole time the code's there.
Yeah, I think, I think the issue is that if you're gonna say that we have a goal of, that uses a carrot and a stick, and then in the policies, we only. List out the sticks and we don't show any carrots in there, it. Kind of makes it, you know, seem dis- disingenuous. I know that there's carrots out there, but if they're not listed in the policy, we probably shouldn't say that they're there.
Yeah, I'm glad you guys pointed this out, because there are lots of carrots, and I think that, um, I think it's useful to. Have a additional policy language that talks about, you know, continuing to invest in programs that promote, like, you know, whatever. We can come up with language, because it's rea, that's the truth of what is happening, and so it's, I'm glad we pointed that out.
Yeah, and I'm thinking too of, my mind's going to like Stream Team and all these other things that we know exist out there, um. They're doing great things, but let, let's connect the dots. Okay, um, so Jennifer, I'll follow up with you on that, sounds like you had some good, um, some good information there, so I'll just put. Stewardship plans, Stream Team. Iron mental health programs, because of my other hat I wear with. Um. Selfish Protection District, yeah, I'm aware of some things that I know other departments do, um, you know. And specifically related to septics and, and that sort of thing on the shoreline, so, yeah, point well taken, uh, point. Written down in notes and we will come back to that, thank you Scott. Okay, who's next?
Yes, SH nineteen. Under, and with the stormwater and referring to the, uh, stormwater chat, um. Um, the WAC and, and whatnot, I don't consider that adequate. In other words, the ecology only requires the. Um, when you dump stormwater into a water body, all you have to do is put it in a catch basin. First to slow it down so that the solids settle out of it, but you don't have to do. Any filtration.
Hmm.
And so phosphate, phosphorus and nitrogen and hazardous chemicals and whatever. Can still go directly into the water body. So I consider the state standard inadequate, and I think that, again, look at the background in my picture. There's, there's water that is dumping straight into Long Lake from the roads and whatnot, and it's contributing to this. Uh, plus, there, the water table, all of the lakes, well, most of the lakes in Thurston County. And the rivers too. Um, are, are rain fed, I mean, we don't have. Well, I shouldn't say that, Nisqually is glacier fed and whatnot, but, but all of the lakes are, are rain fed. And, and it's in the aquifer. So the lakes sit there in the upper aquifer, and the whole county is dumping water into the ground, stormwater into the ground. And if it's not filtered. It goes into the, into the lakes. And so. I think we should have a, something in here somewhere. As a policy. To make, to have, if we, if we truly want to improve water quality. Then we need to address the stormwater. Stream Team says that seventy-five percent of the pollution in our water bodies comes from stormwater. So if that's the case, we just ought to take care of the stormwater thing and forget all the cost and expense of the shoreline master program, but. I consider this totally inadequate.
What would you propose as an alternative?
That we establish another policy. That says something to the effect of. All all stormwater, I think I even wrote something in here. You know, basically, we should forbid direct stormwater introduction, but that would go in four hundred or another chapter. But if you want me to write one, I'll write one and get it to you, but.
Yeah, I I think, I mean, it's just, it's just a question of what, yeah, what, what would you propose? Where would you want it to go? And then what the, what does the planning commission think about that? I mean, that's what I'm looking for here. And also wondering, you know, looking at that through the lens of things that are in the control of. The the master program, right? So I don't know. Like the drain pipes that come into the lake, you know, from elsewhere and beyond. I don't know. How much control there is of that within this specific program versus is that something outside of this? But, you know, could this? Could this document make overtures to that? And this would be the section to do it in, right? Kind of general watershed wide things that that, you know, should be goals to improve water quality.
You could have a general watershed goal, but you could also have a specific one because the ecology allows you to go outside the two hundred. Foot. Distance jurisdiction to impact things that significantly impact the water, water. The the shore lanes and and that would do it. So you could have a policy that is specific on not not putting stormwater directly into any. Any river, lake or marine environment. Or in a wetland. I mean, the way they considered is you can dump stormwater directly into a wetland. Supposed to filter it out. Well, that ends the case. It goes right through it. It's a little bit of filtration. So you can have, you could have a policy that's specifically for the shorelines or the water and you then you could have a general one to encourage it throughout. But generally speaking, in the county, they do have the stormwater retention ponds for every development they put in.
Right. And that's kind of what I was getting at was. What are you proposing in it in terms of policy versus a retroactive reimagining of how we handle stormwater? You know, just kind of what is within the scope of of what we're doing here to to promote. But yeah, again, all. All. Open to that.
Anybody else with me or am I just?
Well, I think the only concern I would have would be. You know, how are you gonna, I mean. Depends on what you're talking about when you talk about stormwater. If you're talking about runoff. From a specific development, that's one thing, but you know. What if you're talking about somebody that's got forest land? They don't have, I mean, if you've got a couple hundred acres, you can't build a retention pond and still keep your property.
I think Doug is referring to direct discharge of some of stormwater outfalls that are operated by the. Stormwater utility.
That and and, you know, just roads in general. You know, but there is, there is cases where from farmland, if you've got a, if you've got a stockyard and you have. Fifty head of cattle sitting on the side of a river. There's a lot of phosphorus, phosphorus that goes phosphates that go into the that river from that. So there there are other sources. Acres like your example, Scott, you know, that's just land.
Well, and if you have a lot with cattle on it. There's regulations for that for confined animal feeding.
Yeah, so. I I don't know, Doug, did you? If you want to give me some kind of framework on a policy, I mean, I can try to, I can, I can certainly try to sketch something out. If folks want to see that. Or if you want to refine that and come back, you know, next time or email it or whatever. I mean, that's certainly also an option.
Okay, I will do that. I don't have the the policy legalese, but.
Yeah, but you, something you said stirred a vague memory. I think it might have been from chapter six hundred. You you submitted comments on that previously, the whole about what ecology might allow or promote outside of shoreline jurisdiction. Yeah, so that sounds familiar and I don't know if we've addressed it elsewhere in the document. But if you look back through some of your past comments you've sent in, I think you might find some more information. All right, so I will, I'm writing that down just to watch for that from you. Who's next or what's the next comment?
I have one on three hundred one thirty. Adding a policy, this is basically comes from some what people have sent in on their comments. A new policy and I just said S H twenty five point five because it fits in there. Basically to respect the rights of property, of private property owners and the rights of citizens at large to use and enjoy shorelines of the state. And to provide property owners with clear guidelines and requirements for future shoreline development. And provide fair and reasonable allowances for the continued use and enjoyment of private property.
Okay, he said twenty five point five, but okay, just to be clear, yeah, okay, but somewhere down here in. Okay, in airline use and site planning.
Somewhere in there could be.
Sure. Yeah, I think, I mean, the even the the wax make reference to those concepts as well. So I think if it's not stated adequately here already, I I mean, my initial reaction is that could certainly be appropriate here.
Well, evidently the, you know, other people that have written in don't feel it's adequate yet, so.
Sure.
I put it in here.
Sure, okay. And I'm, yeah, I think, I think I have your comments here. What are other, what are the other planning commissioners think about that? Eric nodding and. Okay, and so I can, I can put in. And Doug, I don't want to make you read it again. So Doug had a statement in there. I can, I can add his in there. And you know, the next version of the draft will have that. For further reaction from planning commission or for the public to react to, you know, during during the next phase of our engagement. So let me make that note and we can move on. Do that here.
Next one I have is policy thirty one. If anybody has anything before that.
Yeah, so I I've got your comments, so I can just cut and paste that in and find a, find a spot for it where it makes sense. And so you said thirty one?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So this, okay, go ahead, Doug.
This policy provides some flexibility. To the shellfish industry and aquaculture. So my question is. How is the flexibility given in this policy and and controlled and monitored? We're giving them, I mean, I understand that's going to be in another section, but I don't think I found it anywhere else.
Right. Are you specifically, okay. So I think some of the same language regarding the use of different technology and emerging technology. And the flexibility to allow those approaches, that that definitely is later in six hundred as well. And you know, whatever the nature of the operation that someone is proposing for aquaculture. They need to provide all that information to the county. This is exactly what we're proposing to do. These are the impacts that it will have to the environment. These are the mitigation measures we're proposing. So all of that stuff comes along with the submittal for a permit. And I would also add that, you know, Thurston County is certainly not the only agency that's going to have oversight into these operations. So. Again, I'm certainly curious to see if you have thoughts on potentially changing this language or proposing changes to this. But the, but this is definitely an example of something that is discussed in greater detail, I think, later, later on in the document.
I think later is fine. I don't have a problem with the wording here. I'm just concerned with how it's monitored and controlled.
Right.
And I didn't feel like I found that later.
And I think that gets into some of the the bigger conversations we've had surrounding aquaculture as well in terms of the monitoring and how that is conducted. Because there's, there's one, it's one thing to, you know, propose an operation and provide all the information to the county to make its permitting decision. And whatever conditions that come with that decision, what happens after that is a whole different conversation in terms of the monitoring. But we're going to get there. Okay. Does anyone have another comment for chapter three hundred?
I've got S H thirty four.
Okay.
And in that one, it's under, its aquaculture facility should be designed and located to avoid. And I think we ought to have a D, an additional item that says significant impact to native species.
Are there other, other thoughts on that from other planning commissioners? Cause again, we obviously, I think that may be addressed later on, but you know, there's no harm in. Promoting or putting something in here to promote clarity or to, you know, further enshrine the policy recommendations of the planning commission. So I would just look to the rest of the planning commission for concurrence on that.
Is that kind of addressed in in A though, Doug? Not the same?
Well, spread of disease to native aquatic aquatic life.
I think that's one facet of what he's broadly talking about.
Disease is one thing, another impact might be completely taking its environment away.
Well, I would think that that would be addressed in B. I mean, if if the farm species is not having an impact. On the native species, then I don't see where there'd be any problem with the farm species.
Another thought I would have, just, I I don't know, stop me if I'm on the wrong track here, but this specific policy seems to be specifically about spreading. Disease and in, well, I guess A and B are about disease or non-native species. C is more about aesthetics. I wondered if there was a policy that more broadly talks about ecological impacts where your feedback might be better suited. But without scrolling and looking, I'm not sure. I think the, the, I could take the note to, to, you know, look at that general statement you've made and see where that best fits. Whether it's here in thirty four or whether it's, you know, in another.
That's fine with me.
So how does that sound to the rest of the planning commission to kind of look for, look for the place to make that policy consideration that Doug stated? And or or verify that it's not already there somewhere else. That sound all right?
And I don't mean, my, my point wasn't necessarily just native. Gooey ducks, it was other native species, grasses and everything else.
Right. Okay, so I'm just looking for other planning commissioner input before I write it down.
So it doesn't sound like anybody else is interested in it, so we'll move on, huh?
Okay. All right, who else?
I've got another one that's a new one. It's, we've had a lot of comments about plastics. And so I think there'd be a good, it's a good place to put a new policy that all new aquaculture and replanting aquaculture will be encouraged. To eliminate the use of plastics in their operation. So encourage gives a flexibility, but. It's a direction that I think we should encourage them to go.
And did you see that as like a policy thirty nine?
Could be a thirty nine, wherever you want to put it.
Yes, I would certainly concur that we have heard a lot about that issue and I think that could be one opportunity to incorporate that feedback from the public. What, what say the rest of the planning commission on that score? See Dawn nodding.
Okay.
Does anyone else feel that's. A worthy piece to add in this section? Anyone else want to weigh in on that?
Well, this is, I I I'd have to look, I I like the, I like the thought of it.
Okay.
But I like it better in titles in six hundred where we're actually putting the rules down, so I'm not.
Yeah, and I I am fairly confident, well, I can either zip there and make the comment now. I I feel like this will come up again. So I could make a comment here, I could make a comment in six hundred so that we don't lose that thought if that's something the planning commission wishes to discuss later on. This is, again, we get, it's hard to, we're focused on this page, but we know that these things are all interconnected throughout the document, so.
I I think it belongs here and the reason I think it belongs here is we have the ability under policies to use the word encourage. To eliminate. I don't know how easy that's going to be. And so, you know, we get later on in the document and that's where you say specifically what they're supposed to do. And I think it's, it's something that over time will happen, but it's going to be over time.
I I I agree with Doug that putting it in six hundred might, might make it so that way it mandates that they get rid of plastic. And I don't think that we're anywhere near being able to do that yet. But I don't know if we so much need to have a specific policy encouraging phasing out plastics on its own. And maybe in policy thirty one where we're trying to encourage the shellfish industry to become more and more innovative. That one of those innovations in, I talked about in thirty one could be to start finding a BMP or something else. That would encourage them to. Find other materials besides plastics.
That's a good place for it, too.
And I, another option to throw out there could be potentially a hybrid approach and create a new option. Or sorry, create a new policy that kind of broadly encourages the industry to be on the lookout. Or or be early adopters of more ecologically friendly technology, comma, including but not limited to phasing out. The use of plastics or something like that.
Thing like that would be fine.
Yeah.
I think that'd be great.
Okay, what does the rest of the planning commission think about that? Dawn is nodding, thumbs up, Scott's nodding, Jim's nodding. All right then, let me type that out before I lose it. And I'll wordsmith this. Encouraging, okay, great. So. Comment memorialized. Do we have any other comments in? Do we have any other comments in chapter 300?
Well, I made a note on, on 30135 and I just referred back to my comments on policy five and six, which had to do with ADA. Oh no, this is. My thought here is if we're going to require people who develop more, a piece of property that has more than four structures on it, more part, four parcels, that we require them to give public access, can they, can they charge for that public access? Seems how it costs them liability insurance and everything else if they're allowing people on their property.
Well, so remember that the public access that's required would not necessarily extend to folks who are not a part of that community. So it could be that, you know, it's, it's a, it's a subdivision or something like that. It, it, they would only be required to create that access for the lots that they're creating. But whether that like homeowners association or whatever organization it is, whether they could potentially charge, they could certainly charge, I would think, their members for the upkeep associated with it, whether they wanted to charge the broader public at large to come and use that. I mean, it's, I would have to look at that more, but that might also be something that borders on, it's more of a civil issue versus something that SMP would control. I don't know if that's, if I'm off base there or.
No, I thought I just heard you say that you didn't have to give the general public access to that property, only the parcels that are in the development.
Right, that's correct.
Oh, but the way I've read this thing is that you have to give the general public access.
I, I don't think so, and I, I know we've discussed the, we've gone over this in either 400 or 600 and we had, I remember going and checking on this. My understanding is it, it's, the public access is for the lots that you're creating. It's not that you have to then offer that access up to, to everybody, because I think it was Raul who brought that up and had concerns about that.
Okay, if that's the case, then my point is made clear.
Why don't I verify that just to make sure? And if that puts that concern to bed, then great. I'll make a note here to, to do that. Access required as part of you. Okay, I'll look into that, but then I think it's, then I don't know if, if you had that additional question, then if, if, if it is only open to the people who, you know, are owning those lots and they wanted to open it up further. I don't know that that's something the master program needs to address.
Right, no.
Civil issue.
Yeah.
Okay, great, so I'll just check on that, but I think, I, I don't think it's, yeah, to everybody. Okay, is there anything else in chapter 300? From anybody? Okay, so that takes us down to chapter 400, which is a very pithy chapter. It's the general regulations. It's all the good stuff. It's the non-conforming slash existing slash conforming, whatever we end up calling it. It's buffers, it's critical areas incorporation, it's all of these things. So I know we're going to spend a lot of time here, so I would just offer up a time check and see where we're at and defer to the chair in terms of directional next steps here.
Yeah, I was going to check it because it's, it's almost 8:30, so. I, I don't know how everybody feels. Eric wants to go. So yeah, I think since we're not, we're clearly not going to get very far into 400, even if we keep going tonight. I would suggest that we just cut it off right, right at the start of the chapter.
I, I would agree with that, but I do have, I would like to revisit one of the comments I made last meeting that got an answer to, but I've done some additional research on in chapter 100. Or wait on that until next week too, or next meeting. But it's, it's, I'd ask the question about the CAO versus the SMP and what has jurisdiction? And the response Andrew that you gave was it specifically with wetlands and, and whatnot that the CAO has jurisdiction? But in reality, the, the ecology handbook says very specifically that the CAO no longer has the jurisdiction for anything that's attached to the shoreline, wetlands. And if you look at, you see in my, I referred to it in here. Chapter 11, page four of the Ecology Shoreline Master Program Handbook under Critical Areas Ordinance will not apply.
Right. Right, but I would also point to chapters, I think it's chapter four or five that talks about shoreline jurisdiction in general, and then chapter 18, I think, which is incorporation of critical area protections. So that is a true statement that the critical areas ordinance will no longer apply within shoreline jurisdiction. So I think it's, it's a, it's a more of a nuance than it's. The, we are required to protect critical areas that are within shoreline jurisdiction. You don't do that with the critical areas ordinance. But one of your options is to, I'm going to go ahead and stop the share so I can see everybody. So one of those options is to incorporate provisions from that critical areas ordinance. And so you, you know, you can either cut and, literally cut and paste and make that language, whatever's appropriate part of your, your SMP, or you can kind of, you can memorialize the, the CAO as adopted as of the state and these following provisions within that document will apply. So it's not technically the ordinance itself, but it's, you know, it's the language and the protections that are there within, as long as they are appropriate for the shoreline environment. So it, it's, it's definitely a nuanced thing and it's, it's a, it's a complicated subject as far as the interplay between these things. So you, you're right, the CAO as it stands today will not apply, but, you know, that doesn't get the county off the hook of promulgating protections for critical areas in the shoreline environment. So if that's not clear in the SMP, then, then that's definitely a point we can work on.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that the, that the SMP says that it has precedence over everything that has to do with shoreline and not say, and I don't know how the words are because they're said differently in different sections, but some of them imply that you're referring back to the CAO for guidance. I think, I think we should, we, the SMP should have every, have it, all the requirements for shoreline regulations so that the consumer doesn't have to refer back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, all these other things.
So right now, and yeah, so right now, technically it's, they're not going to the CAO itself. They're going to those sections that are included in the SMP by reference. And right now those live as an appendix E. So it, but you're right, it's not, they don't stay in the chapter they're reading. It's okay, appendix E has these critical area pieces in it. And that's how it's currently designed. That is one means of doing so if you read the, the ecology handbook. So that would involve a conversation with planning commission as to how this document is laid out and how they wish to to see these things. And that might be, if that's somewhere the planning commission wants to go, then that might be like a focus topic that we have to
I need to understand that. I asked the question last, two weeks ago.
Andy, can I hit one more, one more portion of 300 real quick?
Here.
On, in 30150, on the policies concerning Alliance for a Healthy South Sound. It's, it says to, that we should have a goal of, of giving them or consulting them for guidance when review of new shoreline projects in South Sound. Does that mean we would get, be giving people that don't live in Thurston County oversight over projects within Thurston County? And do projects include things like development by individuals on their own lots? Or is this projects like, you know, if it's a project, if project means something like what the stream team do, that's one thing, but if projects are, I want to put in a new doc, I'm not really totally keen on giving people that live outside Thurston County oversight over what happens here.
Which of these policies had the, the project language?
Fifty-nine.
Fifteen, okay. Okay, uh, let's see. Okay, so the South Sound, so Alliance for Healthy South Sound, they promote the strategies for shoreline restoration projects and, you know, things that are beneficial for salmon. So that's, yeah, and one of my other half hats I wear is, you know, attending some of these meetings. And so, you know, they, they keep a running tally of projects that could be beneficial to the shoreline ecological restoration. I don't think that's referring to individual development projects and, you know, to my knowledge, there is absolutely no.
Can you add the word restoration between shoreline and project in that very last line?
I think so. I think that's a, that's a pretty quick clarification that would be beneficial. Because we're talking about the specific South Sound strategy, which is not about reviewing, you know, specific development projects. Okay, let me mark that up. I think that that would be helpful because that could be confusing. I, so I'll, I can look at the strategy itself and figure out the best phrasing for that to propose for the next iteration here.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Running out of hand-eye coordination. Okay, great, comment tracked. Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move to staff updates.
I don't have anything specific. I think I gave you some upcoming hearings that the board is having. They're very busy at the end of the year. They're having follow-up work sessions on accessory dwelling units. They are having follow-up work sessions on the 2020 comp plan amendment, including mineral lands and recycled asphalt processing. So all, a lot of the things that you've passed up to them, they're still working through. And may get to action by the end of the year on some of those things and some may continue into next year. I think that's about it. I really appreciate the work that you're all doing on the SMP and taking the time to think about how we should notice people and get them engaged. I mean, this is really our value and what, what we want in community planning, so. Thanks for all your time and volunteering to do all this hard work. I just want to express that.
Okay, calendar, is there anybody that's not available December 2nd? Is there anybody not available December 16th? Okay, does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? So it's 8:35 and we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.